Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the work session Rutherford County School Board. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance led by our Board Attorney, Lauren Bush. You told Mr. Evans and me you couldn't do that.[36.04][36.04](Laughter) Number four on your agenda is approval of the agenda, and if there's anything you need moved now would be a wonderful time to mention something. Hearing nothing tomorrow night will honor Riverdale High School girls. It'll be a repeat from last year, which, if you recall, was a repeat from the year before.[66.31][66.31](Laughter) But at any rate, it's absolutely terrific. There's tomorrow night as well. And number seven, you're looking at your agenda as the Director of Schools position, and it's there, and it's generic, and it's for any comment that any board member would like to make at this time. So the Board recognizes, Chairman recognizes anybody that just start talking.
I thought our interviews went really well.
I agree with that, if you're asking me. I agree. I guess, looking back on it, we probably could have done an extra question, too, but it took about 50 minutes. I don't know, I guess we could ask Mr. Zago, I guess. He didn't look exhausted when we finished, but at any rate, I thought the interviews went well, yes. Anything else, board members? Yes?
(Inaudible) microphone was not on, I apologize. And I know, of course, that we're not going to be voting on anything this evening, but with this being on the agenda and this being our work session for tomorrow, I feel like I would be remiss in not generating some conversation about this. It's very much public knowledge at this point that there have been some challenges that we've faced throughout this search process. And challenges to the point where I'm very concerned, as I believe others are as well, about the process itself in this search and how it was conducted, and concerns me to the point where I think we ought to, as a Board, have some very frank and open conversation about the process itself and if we, as a Board, need to address and potentially request that we look at starting this search over. Now that I've dropped that, I want to make sure that I clarify this, too, for our candidates that were in the final running for this position, that it's not at all a reflection on any of them personally, but just the fact that there were things that we found out along the way where I believe the search was not conducted with the thoroughness that we expected and anticipated from our search firm, that this is something that we need to talk about before tomorrow.
Since you brought it up before we proceed any further into this conversation, let me answer a couple of questions or give you some information about that, if, in fact, there should be a motion and seconded and passed to begin again, if that should happen. The Tennessee School Board Association would, as Mr. Bennett said the night he was here, if you recall, and he told me on the phone that they stick with us until we have a new director, and at no additional cost, and they would do the whole process over again if they needed to do that. He also said, if you'll just kind of visualize a calendar in your head for a moment, the process must be finished, and by finished, I mean a contract has to be negotiated and signed, but, well, I'm going to say June 15th, that's a Friday, I think technically it could be Monday, the 18th of June. So, and as he said, that's not a problem, that's about what it took the last time, and he said we would start the process the night, the morning after you all decided to do this, which would be April the 5th if we, actually, the 4th, I guess, if we decided to do that and go that route. I'm not suggesting that we should or should not at this point, but there's no motion, there won't be a motion, may never be one at all, but there may be one tomorrow night. The reason it has to be finished by June 15th, if you're not aware, and I was not aware of this, but it has to be done 45 days before the August 2nd election, because we have three board members whose seats are open on that date, and, well, that's state law. I don't know any other way to put it, that's the law. So if, obviously, obviously, we could wait, I guess, until after the election, but we would need an interim superintendent at that point and all the problems or whatever that that entails. And that's just information, I'm just sharing with you, I'm not promoting anything. Your point is well made. Mr. Blair?
We had a situation similar to this about eight years ago where the director was going to be renewed, and at that time, and this is a precedent-setting activity from the Board, that the Board voted at that time to wait until the new Board was seated to renew the Director of Schools. Maybe an option or something to consider, that we do that, that we wait until the new Board is seated, and then you go through that process and let some of this settle.
Okay.
And the Board did that by majority eight years ago.
I remember the discussion, but I guess I was county commissioner at that time, I guess. I do remember the discussion, and there were some people that felt, well, we need to have this decision made by experienced people that are on the Board right now. And I remember people saying, well, we need to have the new Board members that are coming on and are going to work with that new superintendent for at least four years, we need to let them have input. So I see both sides of that. I don't know that I feel strongly one way or another, but... Any further comment?
I'd just enter that I recall that meeting eight years ago as well, and if I'm not mistaken, I think it was a special call meeting on a Saturday right before the deadline, and that's not the circumstances we're in now. Chairman, as you've pointed out, there is sufficient time, if the Board were, to choose to restart this process.
I remember that, and you're exactly correct. And the reason for the Saturday meeting was because of the 45 days, and if we waited till Monday...
It would be too late.
That was, because of the county commissioners, I guess, almost all of us came out here, I believe, and I know Dr. Bullard and I came, there was a bunch of us here.
Certainly a nice crowd.
So that was an effort for the 45 days not to be an issue, which was fine. You're right, we do not have that problem this time, unless we delay for some reason. If there's nothing else...
You know...
I'm sorry?
Pardon me, Chairman, I just, if there are, Ms. Moore has mentioned that there are deficiencies that have occurred here, only because it affects so much what we would, you know, it's hard to make a decision to delay or to restart if we don't know, you know, what would we restart to? Are there things that we would do differently? And is that a fair question to ask at this point? Because if we do the same thing again, I wonder, will we get the same results, and where are those things where other Board members or even myself may feel like, you know, we should perhaps do this differently were we to restart? I just, I know this is our work session, and I'd like for us to maybe work that out a little bit.
Well, I don't know, obviously, I'm going to do whatever the Board wants to do. I, do I see some problems, if we voted to, tomorrow night, which is when a vote would have to take place, if we voted to begin the process over and we sent it back to the Tennessee School Board Association, do we want to change anything that we originally sent them, instructions, which were really pretty limited, really, and broad? What do we ask? What are we saying to our three candidates? And, obviously, we have a problem with the interviews. We have already picked out what we thought were the 14 best questions to ask. Or you added one of your own and dropped one, two or three of you, I believe, did that. Well, we've got to ask everybody the same questions. So let's say we had, I do not know whether any of these candidates would reapply or not, but suppose they did, any one or two or three of them, would we then interview them again with the same 14 questions again? Well, I would think the answer to that would probably be, no, we're probably not going to do that. So, okay, so say we had six candidates, what about the other three? Do we then ask, we don't ask them the best questions, we ask them second-line questions? And that won't work. Right. So, you know, I have a thought or two on that, how we might work that out, if that was what we chose to do, and if any one or two or three of the candidates reappplied, I have some thoughts on that, you may have them, too, that now would be a good time to express those, but it's a little too early to worry about that, I would think, but it's a worry, it's a problem.
I guess my concern starts with, we have pledged ourselves as a Board to respect the process. We find ourselves at the end of the process, and I just want to be a little more clear as to how is it that the process has failed us? Is it that we need to have Board members contacting personal references? Will we have more Board member participation in this? Would we have, would we have confidence in TSBA to continue doing this? Would we go in a different direction in that regard? If we're going to get back to the same place again, I just wonder about that.
Do we have to use the same questions?
Not as long as we ask every person that interviews the same questions.
Do we have to give them all to them in advance? Can we interview everybody on one day and nobody get any questions till they're asked?
Mr. Reed, we can do that, can we not? About what we wanted to do?
You control the process, so if you want to ask, if you want to do it all in one day, if you want to ask candidates different questions, you can do that legally, you're allowed to do it. I think the reason that the TSBA was recommending that you ask all the same questions was to make sure all the candidates were treated equally and fairly, to the extent you're asking different questions, it doesn't necessarily mean it's the case, but it could be, a candidate could feel that they're being unfairly, you know, focused on things in their careers that other candidates have not had. So the purpose of asking the same questions is to try to treat all the candidates equally and fairly. Same token, you may got, there may be valid questions that you have for some candidates that you may not have for others. So if you are going to ask different questions of different candidates, you do need to make a conscious effort to try to be fair and equal with respect to all the candidates in that regard.
Is it possible for us to, in essence, close this posting of the position for Director of Schools as unresolved and did not produce a conclusion, and then reopen it, repost it, and as such, then we're not bound by anything we did in the first posting, and we can ask a different set of 14 questions or something of that nature? Or is there, is there any relevance to what we've done in the first posting were we to go into a second posting?
The Board can choose to go either direction. You can keep, you can continue the process that you have going on now, you can go ahead and repost it and treat it as a whole new process and require all the candidates to reapply. If you want to have a system by which you want to keep the existing three candidates in there, in the mix, as potential candidates, you would just do a continuation, I would think, of the process. If you want to start anew and start afresh and say, we're not going to give any precedential value to the fact that these were the last three finalists we have, you can choose that and have everyone, you can repost it and have everyone reapply, including the three finalists you have now. So you could choose, so it's within the Board's discretion to do it either way.
Chairman, I will say that I got a call from one of our county commissioners that expressed some interest by the county commissioners, that they have some level of input or some, you know, polling their concerns or something of that nature. I'm not saying necessarily I'm in favor or against that, but as a matter of what would we do differently, that's one thing that I've heard that comes to mind in a discussion of what might we do different.
Well, the county commission wasn't elected by the people to hire the Director of Schools, we were. I've heard from some commissioners, I'm sure everybody else has, too. That's our job to do that, and if they want to contact us and tell us their feelings, that's fine, but I don't think they need to have a poll or anything else. I think the news journal's got a poll now. We could just go by theirs if we wanted to.
I'm not in favor in complicating the process. The process needs to be a simple process that we can follow, and we don't need to add to it.
We had a, Mr. Hodge may remember better than I, but the Tennessee School Board Association had a, I don't know what to call it, a level, I guess, where, and I think that had been followed before, where community members came in en masse, and I don't remember if county commissioners, well, I know they were on this plan, and we did not choose that plan, which was fine with me, I voted for that. Ms. Hodge, I don't remember, I'm right on that, there was another level of involvement there.
Community meetings.
Yeah, the community meetings, you're right. Yeah, yeah. Well, I can tell you that we sure, getting input, to me, is not a problem. Now, I don't know about the rest of you, but I've gotten plenty of input, as a matter of fact, I mean, it's, I don't know what to say about that. You get an email for candidate A, and they're just lauding this person, and then 10 minutes later you get one that is lauding somebody else and criticizing somebody else, it's all very confusing. But I see why commissioners are concerned, and Mr. Estes is right, the county commission does not elect, nominate, or select the school board chairman, and I don't recall them calling me and asking me about the sheriff. I would have been glad to tell them what I thought, but I don't believe they called me, so, nor should they, by the way, it wasn't my job. But I could have called, or I could have emailed my commissioner. What, as, everything stands right now, this is my feeling about tomorrow night, unless, I think this is exactly what's going to happen, we're going to get to number seven on here, and I'm going to open it up again, and if there's a motion and a second, we can vote on it. If there's not, then we're going to start balloting, and the ballots are ready, are they not? That's our plan. And then I'll carry this one step further. If we have what I will call a winner, I don't know if that's even accurate or not, but if we should have, if we have one, then we have one, and we'll have to have a motion to hire that person or to offer that person a contract to go in negotiations, Mr. Reed, help me out if I'm wrong, but we have to have that and a second, and that has to pass, and then, until negotiations open with a contract, which I think Mr. Reed and I do, I'm not sure exactly the procedures there, with that person, they have to accept it, of course, and so forth. Now, after, if we do not, if we do not have a winner after that first ballot, the Board can make any motion that they want to make at that point about opening it back up again, or about, if we do not have a winner, how to break a tie, if we have a tie, just whatever the Board chooses to do.
Chairman, since Mr. Hodge just came in, could we refresh his, Ms. Moore's suggestion and my suggestion?
Y'all just repeat them, please.
Sure. Mr. Hodge, what I had suggested to the Board earlier was I expressed concerns that, obviously, everyone in the community, as well as all of us, are very painfully aware of, that in my opinion, it's been determined that the search process itself was flawed, and, again, not reflective of any of the candidates that we have here, or suggesting that any of them are not, obviously, a good candidate for this position, but since the things that have come out and have been discovered and the concerns that we have about how the search was conducted in some particular areas to begin with, that it would be in our best interests in representing to the community that we start the search over. Now, if I may, just real quickly to continue, just to comment on things that Mr. Holliday and Mr. Young said, and I agree, we need to, the process does not need to become more cumbersome or complicated by any stretch, and I think we're kind of getting into the weeds here in terms of talking about the details of, well, what questions would we ask, and if these candidates all reapply and they become finalists, you know, will we ask the same questions, and the whole question of what we would ask the TSBA to do? I mean, obviously, those are things that have to be looked at if we're going to say we're restarting this because we felt like the system was flawed and not conducted well to begin with, but I think those are things that, obviously, we're going to have to sit down and work out if we do decide to retain the TSBA, to do this search again, that we're going to have to look back on the things where, the areas where you feel like, perhaps, were not as they should have been, and address those specifics at that time. But to me, the core, the key question at this point is, are we going to continue as is to take a vote, or are we going to make a decision to start the process over?
Mr. Hodge, if you remember, eight years ago, we were dealing with a renewal contract for the Director of Schools, and at that time, a majority of the Board voted to wait for the new Board to be seated before that contract was renewed, although that's not exactly the same as what we have here, but it may be, since there are three seats, that this Board may want to wait until the new Board is seated to begin this process again.
Questions from any Board member?
It's been said that the search process has been flawed and that the search process was not conducted well, and that this is a consensus that we have all come to. I would like to ask, where is the flaw? Where is the error? What is it that has gone wrong?
I'd like to know where the consensus come from, because I'm not under the impression that it's a consensus yet, that the process is flawed.
Well, and if I said anything that suggested that, that was certainly not my intent.
So it may be that the search process is not flawed and has been conducted in an appropriate way. I'm just trying to figure out, you know, does the Board feel that the search process has gone well or not?
My personal opinion is, is TSBA's done what we asked them to do. If you're not liking what TSBA's provided, then maybe we didn't ask them to do the right things, but what I think we put out there for them to do, I think they've done it.
I think I would...
It's kind of hard to go back now and change what you want TSBA to do after they've already done their job.
Well, and I would, of course, disagree with that, you know, as an HR person and looking back at the things that have happened, I don't agree that they conducted the search in a manner that they should have for a position at this level. Personnel files of internal candidates were never even looked at, and there were a lot of questions that weren't asked that should have been when searching for someone, but again, we took it on face value that the TSBA has the expertise and the background and experience to do these types of searches, and certainly I did initially as well.
In the process, Ms. Moore, I think that's valid as well, in the process, I asked and inquired to Mr. Bennett and said, you know, are you going to do this in the process? Are you going to do this? And the answer came back, no. And so I guess that's the kind of, the tightrope that I'm walking between Mr. Young and agreeing with him, what we asked TSBA to do, maybe we didn't completely understand it as far as how far are they going to go? What are they going to do? Because there were areas that, in retrospect, I agree, I wish that they had gotten further into, that they did not, and it seems like that the conclusions that they reached and shared with us caused concern.
Again, I terribly regret this because I know how much TSBA does for us, but at this juncture, I guess, based on this whole conversation, I, you know, I have to share that Mr. Bennett shared with me, that he agreed that there were things that should have been done that were not, and that they were more than happy to start the process over for us, so I'll just leave it at that.
I'd like to say this, the three candidates that we are looking at are employees of Rutherford County Schools. I would think Rutherford County Schools has vetted these employees, and if they're qualified to work here, then they should be qualified to put in for Director's job. It's up to each individual Board member to make the decision, rather, which candidate you like. If you didn't like the candidates that were proposed to us, then that question should have come up way before now. We shouldn't be talking...
We shouldn't be talking about this now. I do tend to, I think, agree with what Mr. Young said. I wasn't in the room, so obviously, I don't know exactly what they did. I know what Mr. Bennett told me. I think they went on our instructions. And if there's fault here, it may, I think we need to equally share it with them, if you want to look at it that way. I think a better job could have been done, and I think we could have given them better instructions, maybe. They've done dozens of these things. And I personally think that Mr. Bennett knows exactly what he's doing, but, like I say, I wasn't there. I will agree with one thing I want to comment on, what Mr. Holliday said, and that is, that it is possible that in six, eight weeks, whatever it is, we may be right back here again, having this same conversation. That worries me. That bothers me, so I don't want that to happen. It also worries me, and it's a little awkward with, maybe with Mr. Zago right here in the room with us, but he's okay. He can take, he's been through, he taught school, he can take anything. I feel like, in a way, in a way, we're saying, well, these three people just aren't good enough. We're going to go in another direction. I hope, I hope, I'm not sending that message to these people. I'm not. And I would, if they wanted to reapply, I would encourage them to do so. And they have, and Mr. Young's right, they have qualifications, we know them.
It brings me back around to the comment that I made about input from the county commission, and I certainly understand that it's our job to make this decision, not theirs. And yet, I think back to when we hired Mr. Odom, we did indeed have an event that solicited community input, and all of the county commissioners were there. And that was part of the process that informed us and helped us as a board to give better instructions to TSBA as to exactly what we were looking for, the conversations that we had before the solicitation of candidates. That was, that was part of the process. It brings me back again to, if we were to say that we didn't give enough criteria for TSBA to step up to and examine according to, then how would we collect that criteria, and what would that criteria be, were we to go forward? If we don't have any different criteria, I'm not sure how we expect to get a different
Shouldn't we decide that after we, tomorrow night?
Doesn't it influence whether or not we restart? Because if we don't have the expectation that we're going to have different criteria, then the expectation could easily be found, we're going to end up at the same place. Therefore, maybe we listen for a motion and a ranking, a poll, a decision, if we're going to end up right back where we are. And if we don't change anything, how are we going to end up at a different place? What's different?
I don't know that I can answer that question. I would say that there will likely be one difference, I would think, and that is, we're going to have, according to them, according to Tennessee School Board Association, we're going to have more candidates the second time, both from out of county, out of state, and within the county. I have no idea if that's right or not. I have no idea. But Mr. Bennett said he was pretty sure that that would likely happen, and that it went, and when, in his experience, it had happened before. I don't know whether that, I don't know, I don't know. Now, if we, I think in general, I'd like to, I would like to send it back to Tennessee School Board Association with perhaps some amendments to our instructions. But if the board chose not to do that, we're not avoiding our job at all, but be aware that we've got to have committees set up, which we do not have. I have to appoint them. And then, say, we had 15 candidates the last time, what if we had 20 again, 20, let's say, 15 or 20? Could have more, I don't know. Then that committee would have to go through those resumes. We would do everything that the Tennessee School Board just did, plus more. I just, do I want to do that? Well, no. If it yielded a better result, and I was confident of that, you know, I mean, that's, I was on the ballot, so, yeah, I guess, I guess we'd have to do all of that. I dread the idea of calling people that I've never met in my life, the references that they've used, and wherever they are employed, and asking them, you know, give me a verbal reference on somebody, and we'd have to do all of that. We, I don't know if we have the, we have the resources, we've got this building, and we've got telephones, so I guess we'd do that. But that's, that's going to take a lot of time. Maybe it would yield a better result, I don't know. I just, I wanted you all to be aware, this is not going to be done by some mysterious committee somewhere, you know, off in the back of this building, and next to Mr. Clardy's office, which you can't find with a bloodhound. It's not going to be that. It's going to be us. I just think we're getting the cart before the horse here. I think we need to. I agree. We need to wait and see how we vote, and then if the majority decides that we need to start all over, then we start talking about these things. But right now, it's not the time to talk about it. Well, again, that being absolutely redundant, I'm going to open it up tomorrow night for comments and a motion. And if nothing happens in 30 seconds, or whatever, then we're going to take the first ranking. And then, and then if there was no winner, then we will, the floor will be open for motions to, well, the floor will be open for motions.
Proceedurally, if a motion is made, seconded, and is not supported, I think there could be a case made under, you know, whether it's Robert's Rules of Order, or just our own proceedings, that then that motion cannot be heard a second time. And yet, I can foresee that in this particular circumstance, we may end up circling back. Could we get a clarification on that in preparation for this?
As you all know, for any board to take any action, you need a motion, a second, and then the affirmative vote of a majority of the board members. We have to have four votes for a motion. So any motion less than four votes will fail. So if you don't have four votes, it's a failing motion. If you then want to make a different motion, you can make a different motion at that point. So I don't, when you talk about the motions being the same, I don't know exactly what you're talking about, two motions being identical and being the same. You know, I think what Mr. Jordan has talked about doing with respect to the, right now, the agenda item is director of schools. So when it comes up, I think any motion, any board member wants to make is fair game tomorrow night. That motion will have to get a second, the majority of the board members will need a vote to support that motion or not. If I've heard what Mr. Jordan is saying, that in the event there is no motion tomorrow night, then we, he intends to proceed on with a ranking, which is not a vote, but that's a ballot, a piece of paper, which I have put down, the names alphabetically on, and will give each of the board members opportunity to rank their preferred candidate, one, two, and three, which we then can tally and say, okay, we have this many board members think this person should be their preferred candidate, this person is second, this person is third. That vote does not determine who director of schools is. You then will have to make a motion, someone's going to have to make a motion to appoint, to offer someone the director of jobs position and negotiate with them for a contract. That motion will have to be seconded, and then you have to get affirmative vote, a majority of the board members, to support that motion. So in the event, the rankings come back, and there's not a, no candidate has four number ones by their name, and there's no clear choice. Say there's a tie, say you have two candidates with three, maybe it's three, three, and one, or maybe it's just three, three. So if there's no clear majority from the ranking, then at that point, the board will have to decide what it wants to do. At that point, you can take whatever action you choose to take. You can take, decide to continue, reopen the nominee, the candidates, and do the search again, if you want to. If you want to eliminate the last person on the ballot, on the ranking, you can eliminate, vote to eliminate the last person, and then re-rank them again with the last person eliminated. So that's within the board's prerogative to decide how you want to handle that. In the event, the rankings come back, and you don't have a clear majority candidate from the three that you have.
My specific concern is, if the first motion is a motion to restart the process, and if that motion were to fail for lack of a majority, and then the ranking process revealed a potential deadlock, would the board have the ability to reconsider the motion of restarting the process?
Yes, you would be able to do that.
Okay, because that would be essentially considering the same motion a second time, and that was the procedural that I didn't understand.
You could do that, because you've gone through the ranking process, you've got new information, you know what the results of the ranking is at that point, and if someone wants to make that motion, you can make that motion.
Number eight, approval of consent agenda. Anybody wish anything changed there? Oh, my, Mr. Chairman. I get carried away where they are. Okay, let's go down to number nine, Mr. Director.
Number nine is Section C, the instructional materials adoption for fine arts. The fine arts textbook committees are recommended adoption of the following texts for the Section C instructional materials adoption cycle. The adopted texts will go into effect for the 2018-19 school year, and will be the district's adopted fine arts text for a six-year period. For K-5 elementary music, Quavers General Music, Tennessee Curriculum, grades K through five, and 6-8 music would be interactive music building for grades six through eight. The 9-12 general music would be music, its role and importance in our lives. The 9-12 vocal music would be How Leonard Voices in Concert, various levels and voicings. The 6-12 instrumental music is Smart Music, is a web-based music learning software. The 9-12 grade music theory is Total Harmony. And the K-5 elementary art, now going to art, is Explorations in Art, K through five. 6-8 middle school art would be different books for different grades, Personal Journey for sixth, Community Celebration for seventh, and a Global Pursuit in eighth. 9-12 art would be art, the visual experience, discovering drawing, experiencing clay, experiencing painting, and focus on photography. And 9-12 is art history, Gardner's Art Through the Ages. And 9-12 theater is basic drama projects. And you have some notes on several of those, that the state doesn't always select a textbook for in their list. So anyone with an asterisk is not on the approved adoption list, and will therefore be considered off-list adoptions. The motion is to approve Section C instructional materials adoption for fine arts.
Question for the director. Number 10.
Number 10 is textbook adoption report ED 5009, and textbook certificate of adoption of the ED 2153 for driver's education. School systems are required to submit textbook adoptions annually on forms provided by the Tennessee Department of Education. The high school textbook committee recommended the purchase of the driver's ed textbook listed below for use beginning in the 18-19 school year through the 2022-23 school year, and it's high school driver's ed, but textbook title is Drive Right. Recommend approval. The motion is to approve the driver's ed textbook adoption for high school as presented.
Questions for the director. A lot of people need to read that Drive Right book. Okay, number 11.
Number 11 is textbook adoption report ED 5009, and textbook certificate of adoption report ED 2153 for health. School system, again, are required to submit textbook adoptions annually on forms provided by the Tennessee Department of Education. Middle and high school textbook committees are recommended the purchase of the health text listed for use beginning 2018-19 through 2022-23 school years. The first one is in for grades six through eight, is teen health, and the course Lifetime Wellness for high school students is Essential Health is the title. The motion is to approve the health textbooks adopted for middle and high schools presented.
Questions for the director. Number 12.
Number 12 is, again, is the textbook adoption report, again, ED 5009, and textbook certificate of adoption report ED 2153 for science. School systems are required to submit the textbook adoptions annually on forms provided by the Tennessee Department of Education. The elementary, middle, and high school textbook committees are recommended the purchase of science textbooks listed for use beginning 2018 through 2019 through 2022-23. So these instructional materials are on the state-approved list. K-5 science is Inspire Science. 6-8 science is Tennessee Middle School Interactive Science. Biology one, they are actually meeting now, they called them all back. We'll have the name in there tomorrow night. Dr. Martin said she may run in here and tell us. They actually went through the selection and chose one, but they said, we just want to hear from both of their two choices one more time. This is one of the tested ones. Biology one is one of the tested EOCs that does accountability, so they, the teachers wanted to do one more shot at it. So Biology two is Campbell's Biology Concepts and Connections. The AP Biology is Campbell Biology AP Edition. Physical science is Foundations of Physical Science. Chemistry one is Chemistry, Matter and Change. The AP Chemistry is Chemistry, a Molecular Approach. Physics one is Physics, Tennessee. AP Physics one and two is College Physics, a Strategic Approach. AP Physics C is Physics for Scientists and Engineers, a Strategic Approach. The AP Environmental Science is AP Environmental Science, is the title of the book. Human Anatomy and Physiology, and the textbook is Essentials of Human Anatomy and Physiology. Astronomy, the title is astronomy. And Ecology is Environment, the Science Behind the Stories. Instructional materials that are not on the state-approved list, there's some pre-case science, those teachers met, and they wanted some various hands-on instructional materials, and they listed a publisher here, they would use in some instances, in those cases. The kindergarten, again, it regen is science, the state doesn't produce one, will again be looking on hands-on science instructional materials. They're looking at the Lakeshore Learning Group, which does provide some for that. Earth and Space Science would be, the title would be Earth Science. Environmental Science would be Environmental Science, Your World, Your Turn. Recommend approval. The motion to approve the science textbooks adoption for elementary, middle, and high schools as presented. schools as presented.
As you're aware from the budget last night, that's millions of dollars worth of science books in it.
It is, huge amount.
Any questions for the director? 13.
13 is the facilities, and this is a change order for Rockvale High School, is change order number one. Barton Mallow Company has submitted change order number one in the amount of $800,000 for extra work at Rockvale High School. These funds will be held as a contingency for an unforeseen $500,000 Muffin Smur water and sewer department sewer line extension to our property line at the west side, and a $300,000 change for all metal deck fireproofing, fire doors, and hardware that are added by the state Fire Marshal's Office in the plan review process. The change is the contract amount from $62,784,500 to $63,584,500. Any unused portion of these funds will be returned to the Rutherford County Schools through a deductive change order. These funds have previously been amended in the construction budget. Recommend approval. The motion is to approve change order number one to Barton Mallow in the amount of $800,000 for Rockvale High School. I, I would suggest that you let Mr. Clardy tell you why we're at this particular point.
Mr. Clardy.
During, on the fireproofing, normally we have been doing sprinklers, and during the review process, we, the state Fire Marshal's Office decided we can't use sprinkling systems under those decks anymore. They have to be fireproofed. So we've gotta go through the whole school, fireproof the deck on each floor under it and on, above each ceiling, and all the structural beams have to be fireproofed. There's been some, we're running into some serious issues with the state Fire Marshal at this point, because they have had a change, they've changed codes, and many times the field and the office are in disagreement about things. So we're looking at now on our next building to maybe go with just a concrete plank up on those second floors with a cap slab on them. But that is, all, there's a lot of doors, there's some that we've gotta change out, a lot of door hardware with crash bars and that types of things. And then, the city of Murfreesboro has, basically to get sewer service there, has forced us to put a sewer line down to the end of the property line. So we're having to do that, so they, I guess, can pick up the next piece of property down there. And that's half, that's a half million dollar or that. So, those are the things we're contending with, and it's kinda gotten worse over the last few years. And from now on, when we do something in the city, we'll just have to start putting extra money in the budget. As you recall, we don't have any problem in Laverne, or Smyrna, or in the county anywhere. But anytime city and sewer is involved, we have to pretty much play by their rules. And we're putting those in a contingency within our contract as a change order for the owner, and we'll draw on that contingency as those change orders come in. If there's any reserve funds, then those will be change ordered back to us through a deductive change order. Have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them for you.
Where is Rockvale on, on the schedule? Right on schedule?
It's on schedule, maybe a little bit ahead. We're grading all the ball fields, we're shooting some lines out now for stormwater, they're laying blocks on the second floor on a lot of the areas. I think they've been getting approximately 27,000 blocks a week, they're laying them. It's out there yesterday, they're prepping slabs on second floor, they've already started the fireproofing, they're doing rough ends on the bar joists that are, they already have set for the electrical plumbing. They're making really good progress on the geothermal wells, they're working in several different locations, and it's been very nice to work on rock pad instead of working in a mud hole all winter. So, we're in the process of probably writing the specs, that we will do a rock pad for most of schools from now on, unless it's just too cost prohibitive. But we ran into that issue up at Smyrna Middle, as you recall, we ended up with a mud hole up there for three and a half or four months, so that put us behind.
Did you read the recommended motion you did, did you not, you read?
I think the recommended motion is to approve change order number one to Barton Mallow in the amount of $800,000 for Rockvale High School.
Any questions for the director on Rockvale? You know, we're just one community meeting away from them telling us that there's no way it'll be open on time, you know, you know that.
Yeah, but you know the answer to that.
I do know the answer. Number 14.
Number 14 is your 2018 summer school calendar. Instruction Department is requesting approval of the 2018 summer school calendar. Its plans are for the high school course offerings. The high school site will be, again, at Blackman High School. The high school first semester course offerings will be from May 29th through June 22nd, 2018, and the second semester will be scheduled from June 25th through July 20th, 2018. Transportation services not provided, and the tuition will remain at $100 per one-half credit for high school course and $200 for driver's education. Recommend approval. The motion to approve the instruction department's request for the summer school sites and calendar as presented. And I might say a thing, because we, it's been a number of years since we've talked about this, we've held this amount, basically tuition, it is not covered by your basic education program state funding, because this is a summer, this is beyond that. Typically, the students that, that come to our summer school are in some type of a grade recovery, or some of them are taking it for new courses to graduate early, or, so we have a combination of students that go, come for that. The $200 for driver education, why is it higher than the others? This went back several years ago, because again, since it's not covered during the regular school year, and you get the state fundings for driver's education, you still have wear and tear on tires, repairs, that sort of thing, and so I'd say the $200 is very competitive with anybody else out there in the field, but that's why it is higher than the others. And it's, it's on tab three, if you're gonna look at it again for tomorrow night or something, that's the full year, I think it's the one before that, summer school.
Question for the director? 15.
15 is proposed Rutherford County Schools for 2019-2020. This is the academic calendar, and this is on tab four. Recommend approval. A motion to approve the Rutherford County Schools 2019-2020 academic calendar as presented. We are already receiving calls, you've already approved the 18-19, but Nissan and some other major manufacturers are working a year out now, and, and people are trying to plan their summer, their vacations, and their times off for spring break and that sort of thing, trips on cruise ships and that sort of thing. So, makes it better if we just go ahead and approve it as best we can. If we have them in for a day here and there, we'll do it. That kinda lets them know when their spring break and fall break will be, so they can adopt that.
Calendar's in tab four, if you have questions, it's a good time to ask them.
16 is Career and Technical Education, EPP Specialist Job Description. You requested this for information, and this is the one where Ms. Pilgrim is here, can speak to this. We did apply for a grant, received it, it came from the US Department of Education down through the Tennessee Department of Education, so that we could do some job embedded licensure for our career and technical education teachers. We had this conversation earlier when we first announced that we were going to apply, that one of the problems that you very often have is somebody comes from industry to come in and work in our CTE, but they cannot get a teacher's license, or it's temporary until they earn, go back to college 18 hours, so they can get their license that no one pays for, unless we would choose to pay for it. So, the state is looking for ways, models, that could use where we could do more in job embedded, we could have people here that would help with this teacher preparation program for CTE teachers, and use this model in other districts here too. I think it's gonna be very high hurdles, but this is kinda the, that's, the job description on tab five is as best we can say now is what this position will be. We're in totally new territory and ground, and if Tennessee licensure says, no, we need to add this or that, we're gonna have to make some adjustments. But we've gotta get this person kinda in place to start possibly sometime this summer, right? So that we can start the process with our CTE teachers that will be coming on board from business and industry without licensure. And that's a real problem for us, because very often CTE come in, and they're making less than what they're made in private industry, you tell them, oh, well, by the way, you gotta go earn 18 hours at MTSU and pay for those credits, and so Tennessee needs this model. Need to accommodate some very skilled people that do not technically have that part of the licensure.
Questions for the director?
Ms. Pilgrim, she's here.
Ms. Pilgrim, who's always with us. 17, insurance update. Mr. Sandvik, Dr. Anthony, anything?
You have a handout?
We do.
For the new medical insurance rates that will be effective January 2019, assuming that the commission's budget committee approve them this Thursday, full commission Thursday week. But our, our budget, and you've also got the detailed budget pages, our budget is built around these proposed rate increases.
Four million, four hundred and forty-four thousand?
Yes, sir.
Substantial increase. Possible we may have chosen the wrong career. Just saying. Are the right career. Directors update.
We have for you this evening, Mr. Sandvik's prepared, this is the line item budget, we still do not have the revenue side for most of these. It's taking much, many of the things that you saw last evening, you know, when we went over the, the summer sheets on the spreadsheet, breaking them down to individual line items. The first four sheets, which is the summer sheets, is where I would start before I sat down and go through the, the big one, but you, I would call your attention on, on page one, look at the very bottom line, this is your overall budget increase, how many positions you're talking about, and how many, what percent of positions increased you got, that's it. Another interesting thing, on the second page, we've been talking insurance, look at line 207, medical insurance, that our school system now, next year, they anticipated it will cost us $47,736,379 is our share of the insurance for our employees. So, I, I found that to be a very interesting figure there. So, again, you can look at it with the other things and see, and you can see the increases or the deductions, or whatever it might be. I find it interesting that unemployment compensation may go down. Any particular reason for that one?
Very minor. We, we, our claims history has been good of late, but I, the, the timeframe for getting it from adult ed is pretty well over, so that, that's where the decrease came.
But anyway, I think that's just one of those armchairs, sit down and look over and study it. When we meet again at budget time, you'll, we should even be able to update this, maybe in between if we can get some more numbers, revenue numbers. When is, when is the next budget meeting?
Eighteenth, isn't it?
Eighteenth of April.
Thank you, Mr. Sandvik. Okay. Any questions for the director on anything that he related to you?
Mr. Odom, I have that book they selected, Pearson Biology, it's the title of it, Miller and Levine is the author.
That would be the Biology one that has the missing, and we'll, Ms. Michael's making Oden, we'll make sure it's on.
I'll get with her afterwards.
Printed version tomorrow evening, we'll have it there.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Odom. Number 19 is Tennessee Legislative Network. Is more?
Chairman, I will have a report on that tomorrow.
Thank you. Holliday, number 20 is Federal Relations Network.
The Congress continues to work on the higher education bill. The most significant impact there is the regulations around student loans, and so we wanna keep an eye on that. There's no action imminent, but there are meetings taking place that are crafting what the language will look like. It's of note to our educational field that some teachers end up with grants, and as we try to be advocates for people going into the field of education, and, and also as we recruit teachers, it does appear that the, some of the grants that were in place for, for teachers to pursue a degree in education and then serve possibly in a Title One or a, a, a school that is challenged to get new teachers or adequate teachers, there was a program in place that seems to be in jeopardy for, for those teachers to use grant money to pay back some of their student loans. So that's worth, worth our attention and taking notice of. Also, there continues to be, it's really a state issue, but there continues to be national conversation about school security, and some of that conversation takes the effect, or takes the, a look at whether or not we arm teachers, and I know that here in Rutherford County, we have just such a wonderful track record of work by our SROs and, and their ability to be in the schools and, and work in that capacity. I, I think that whenever possible, we should certainly sing the praises of the partnership that we have with the Sheriff's Department, the effective work of the SROs, and the way that our SRO program has been a training facility, or a, a training example for many around the nation.
Questions for Mr. Holliday? General discussion by board members, I have a couple of things, real quick, if you look at your budget, your, your very first page of your budget, the very first item, which is the director's salary. I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying this out loud, and then when we get to the budget, we, we can comment further. We didn't have this material last night, of course. That, I, I talked with Mr. Bennett this, this, well, I guess it's been about 10 days now, and he related to me that in his judgment, that was a problem. It's just too low. We're not in the ballpark with a system our size, number of schools, number of students. And I'm, I'll call on Mr. Blair, I think you told me we were 70-something in the state?
Eight, I believe.
Seventy-eight, you think in the state?
Out of 146 districts, I believe.
I'm sorry?
Out of 146 districts.
We're, okay. I'm just asking for some attention, maybe be paid to that. The other thing, it goes back to what Mr. Holliday just said, if I'm not mistaken, today, and I heard this from the other room, so I didn't get the report, I just heard it, that the bill to arm teachers failed today in committee. Is that, that correct? In the state legislature? Which, which to me, great news, but maybe you don't feel that way, but at any rate, the bill failed to get out of committee, which generally, that's, that means it's dead, generally, but we can't always be sure, as a legislator once told me, nothing is ever dead on the Hill. But anyway, also, as part of that- But anyway, also as part of that, and we have at least two former Riverdale teachers in the room. It's unbelievable to me, but that bill called for a, or a school to arm one teacher for every 75 students, which puts Riverdale with 23, 26 people as well worth. What, can you, you want to pick out the 26 when you and I were there? I don't either. But at any rate, that to me is alarming. But anyway, I'm, I've already taken up too much time on this and hopefully it's dead for at least this session. Anything else on, on the discussion? Yes, sir, Mr. Blair.
I'd like to re, restate my desire and I think the desire of the board to increase the SRO presence in, on our campuses. And if there's some way that we have to approach the sheriff and the commission to get that done, I would, I guess I'll continue to mention it until we maybe could get some traction. But I, I think our, our students and our, our staff would be much safer if, if we could add one to two SROs depending on the size of the campus. And I hope that could happen. And Mr. Odom, if we do go to that amount, I certainly would suggest you sending us a belated invoice for the, because you're certainly well worth that amount.
Ms. Moore?
Yeah, Mr. Jordan, in fact, could just want to go back real quickly to the earlier conversation we were having about the director's search. You mentioned, and I don't remember exactly how you worded it, but you mentioned in a conversation that you'd had with Mr. Bennett from the TSBA, that he'd indicated that if we started this search over, that we would likely have more, more candidates.
Just according to what he told me.
Okay.
I don't know that.
Can you speak to why he thinks that that would be the case, that we would have a bigger pool of candidates this time than when we did before?
Yes, I can speak to that. That's what you want me to do?
Please.
Okay. He said that he felt like that, and he did not know why, and he wasn't accusing us of anything, which accuse is not even the right word. He said that he thought that a large majority of people thought that we were absolutely looking at local candidates only, okay? And he didn't say that was true or false or anything like that, that's just what he said. And he thought that, that evidently that wasn't necessarily true and that we would have more candidates there. He also thought that we would, we might have more local people and I don't really recall exactly what he said about that, about why he felt like, he did say that, that, I'll just, I'll just go on and finish my thoughts since I'm kind of quoting him here. He was, he was in favor, I think, of us, of, of us opening it back up again, maybe at least considering it. And he said, Ms. Grissom, it's Dr. Grissom, isn't it? Dr. Grissom was, was sort of okay with that as well and they understood why that might be necessary. And like I said earlier, he said it had been his experience that the second time around, we would have more candidates. Of course, he's, that, that's it.
Thank you.
If I remember it, that's it.
Thank you.
We're in, we're in discussion period and nobody's discussing, so.
Well, another thing that Mr. Bennett said to me is that he thought that we would get more candidates if we raised the salary.
Yes, I, I thought I said that.
Pardon. I'm sorry, I was, I was looking for.
He told me that that was a problem.
He shared the same kind of thoughts with me and, and, yeah. What you said.
I'll, I'll carry that a step further and tell you, if I may, of what else he said and I, and I'll point out the obvious to everybody here. Mr. Bennett is, is a nice gentleman and very efficient and works very hard, et cetera. He does not run the Rutherford County School System and he's, he's fully aware of that. But as far as the, the salary was concerned, he, he just said we were, there was, I can't remember his exact term, but that we were certainly behind the curve on, on salaries and what was, whether we liked it or not, and making difference how, how we felt or how he felt what the correct amount should be compared to other, other states and major systems, we were, we were behind. And I think we've got, if we're 78th in the state and we're the fourth largest system in the state, I think it's pretty obvious, but maybe not. I, I did also, I'll go another step. And Mrs. Sandvik is going to love this. I said, well, Mr. Bennett, we, we're just starting the budget and, and frankly, although I, this room may be aware of it, I hate to embarrass Mr. Odom, we've tried to give him more money and he won't take it. I'll just say it, all right? And we barely got him to take what the teachers got last year, if you remember, Mr. Holliday, and you were the one that pushed that. And we sat here and there was no raise on this. Everybody else got a raise. Anyway, he, he seemed to feel that, I said, Mr. Sandvik wouldn't like this. I said, well, we're about to start the budget process, I said, and it's possible that we can take care of part or some of what you say. And he gave me a figure of $180,000 a year at a minimum. I'm passing that along, we're not in budget hearings. And I said, okay. He said, $180,000 to $200,000. I said, okay. I mean, he's just throwing out figures now with which I'm not familiar. But anyway, and I said, well, we're going, we're on the budget, we, we, maybe we can get some of this done. And he said, I think you ought to do it now. And he said, Jeff Sandvik, we'll find the money. And I said, no, he won't. And so we hung up. So that was the end of the conversation. So, Sandvik, I expect you to go hunting tonight and find that money. Okay. Maybe we can end on, yes, sir.
Speaking of budget, out of this 20 million, 10 million is increased teachers, 3.3 million is state retirement, 4.4 million is medical insurance, 2.7 is textbooks. We have very little control over those four items and that makes up the biggest part of this budget increase we're looking at. I just wanted to point that out. We're really not adding much to our budget.
It's like 11, 12% of it, is the only part we have, it's something like that, isn't it?
It's something closer to 80% is personnel, somewhere in that close range.
I think we are a touch over 80% is personnel, staff and benefits. Then when we go, and I haven't updated this number here. When you throw in utilities, textbooks, our, our, staff is the main thing we control. We don't have a lot of control on teaching positions, but, yeah.
Maybe we have some input basically on 10% maybe of, of the total budget?
If that.
That's too high?
Right. Yeah, that might be a little high. But again, some, some of the staff positions that we currently have in are, there are some we would like to have, but, you know, it's, yeah. Those are things we'll have to discuss further and, and at our next meeting, we should have a preliminary pass on our revenue, at least the BEP. And I think at least Nolan will have given us some very preliminary local numbers also. So we'll be in a better position by that point.
Well, we're legally bound on, on contracts and the bills and just the heating and air is millions. I mean, there's, it's not a matter of, you need to cut that. Well, I mean, that's the bill. I'd like, I'd like to cut it at my house too, but I don't see them settling for less money than what they send me on the bill. Anything else under? Thank you, Mr. Young. I'm glad you brought that out. Anything else on general discussion? Appreciate the input very much. Appreciate our visitors. Always great to see some people in the room that I hadn't seen in a while. We are adjourned.